I'm going to call meeting number 1,612 to order. It is now 7:14 PM. I would like to change the order of the agenda. It's being a little bit late since we have a late start to address number four and five as we have a student representative and a student spotlight.
So moved. Second.
Second by Arthur. Roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Danell?
You need to unmute.
Danell?
I don't know if we can move it up yet because the kids are on the way.
Oh, they're not here?
They're, they're, they're coming all the way from, so I don't want to.
Okay, so let's get the minutes.
Sorry.
Let's approve the minute. Do I have a motion to approve the minute?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any comments? I thought they were great.
Beautiful.
Yeah. All right.
Sorry, this is just the minute taker. Can you say your name when you make a motion and second? I, I just, I'm not familiar with the names.
Dennis made the motion. Jeff Blaugrind made the second.
All right. So I'll do a roll call vote for approval. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell? Danell, are you there?
I am, but I, I don't, I wasn't let in when you guys were still talking. I don't, what are we voting on? Sorry. I didn't hear the.
The minutes for number one.
Okay. Oh, yeah. The minutes. Good. Yep.
Anne? Carrie Anne, do you approve the minute?
Yes, thank you.
Arthur?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane. Okay, the minutes have been approved. Would somebody give me the heads up when it's ready? Enrollment? Item C. Want to make any comments or are there any questions for Beth?
The enrollment as of 9/1 is stable at 635.
Being material trends in the flow or inflow that we can pull to?
There's a page showing new.
I understand, but that doesn't really address reasons. It's more.
Isn't there a page on that? There is. Yeah, there's students transferred out of district to, to, in district. This page be here?
You know, I, I, I see that.
Oh, but.
That's not, that's quantitative. It's not qualitative.
Okay.
I don't have any, I don't have any additional qualitative that resides to the level of making an additional comment at this point.
Thank you.
I'm looking for hands up. No, we, in other. Oh, I see some, some, we don't have miscellaneous parts, so we are ready for our students.
How's that for timing?
Yeah. Okay.
So how's the best way to do this because maybe what we'll do is have you guys come up. Ms. Danell?
Okay.
I would tell them so, so they shouldn't have to go to the aisle.
Do you have a copy of the student T-shirts here or just the school committee?
You know, I just have this, um, yeah, because, you know, I did. They're in my office.
I'll go first and I'm gonna go grab them from the office. We can show the T-shirt.
Well, yeah, but she, I think it don't matter. But.
Well, we're gonna post it on the website.
So why don't we just bring them up so we can, um, they can get closer to being at home. All of them.
And if you want to come up, we'll talk about it.
And we need to be right up, right center there and look toward the aisle.
See that little owl thing? So we're gonna be on the video up here. You see us in the box?
See there? People are waiting here. Wonderful. Yeah.
All right. So, so I have with me two sisters, Annabelle and Violet. Um, let's see. Violet, this year is in fifth grade in Claudie Mallory's homeroom.
Yes.
And Annabelle is in third grade in Jane Scher's homeroom. And now we go back in time, back to the future here. Last year, we had this T-shirt contest that was pretty student-driven. We had over 40-something submissions.
Not to say 40-something, not the right.
Yeah, 40-something submissions, all of which were terrific and a lot of fun. And, and the admin team got together over the summer and took a lot of time deliberating over which one would eventually become the T-shirt for all students as they return, both in elementary and secondary. And the, the T-shirt we ended up choosing, which we will post later this evening on our, on our school apogee account on the new website, was, um, Annabelle. Yeah. And Annabelle did, you wanted to talk about the design a little bit?
I did a design and a box. And it said Shine Bright.
Shine Bright.
S-B-R-S-D, Shine Bright. Yeah. It was great, which is, which is in contrast to your recent book report, which was about Peep the Cat Snow Day.
My mother person.
Yeah. And, and, and Annabelle also submitted a design. Sorry, Violet, do you remember what was?
Yeah. I did like the header and it had stripes in the back and it said, um, boring success at elementary.
Boring success at elementary, which was a big runner-up.
It was.
Thank you both for doing this.
It's okay. It's okay. We are, we have a little gift card for each person who helped us out and for all your hard work. So thank you so much and thank you for coming. Here does, is that one?
And Dr. Michaela is our super representative.
All right. Mikayla, come on up. She's, she's, she's group two. We had so many excellent choices. We, we did multiple T-shirts. So Mikayla has, has the job as dad as here.
Yeah. So, um, for, on the Mount Everett side, um, the secondary had some great designs. The front of all the Mount Everett shirts and the ones we gave the staff were designed by Emma Stewart. And it was a nice message of, um, we have one here, but one team, many dreams, which is a nice theme for the year for all of us. And then the back of the Mount Everett shirts were designed by Katie Gapra, Chevelle Ray Stanger, and Mikel Carpenter. Mikel took one for the team, literally. The other girls are playing soccer today. Mikel was out with an injury, so she drew the lucky chance to come here and talk to all of you. So she's gonna talk quickly about what their design was all about.
Yeah. So, um, we started off by deciding that we wanted to do a shield on the back because we wanted to show how strong we were. And we ended up putting Mount Everett on it because that's our school. And one thing that we definitely put into perspective was our principal last year during COVID put out Eagle Strong was one of his many things. And we thought that shield would represent really how strong we are as a community. Basically it.
Are you just operating the Mount Everett?
They're in my office. So these are actually shirts for the school committee so that you guys have an example. And we will mail, for those who haven't been here, your socks and your shirt will come together for the school committee members who haven't been able to join us. So after, we'll make sure you guys have your shirts.
I got, go. I like that. Oh, wow.
Some good smizing right there. We need one more. She needs one more picture.
Oh, yeah.
It was fine, wasn't it?
Yes. All right.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you. So now we're at public comments. So if you're in the public and want to comment about lateral movement, the MOU or Minute Solutions, our possible discussion of vaccination policy or the regional school district planning board, please raise your hand and let us know what you think. I'm so pleased to have so many people listening, by the way, the participation of the public because of remote, which I kind of hate, but I love how many people are participating from home. So thank you for spending time with us. All right. I'm going on to, there is a hand.
Oh, I was, I'm confused when we're going to talk about the vaccine policy. Is that now or?
This works for. We don't have a discussion with the public. You have three minutes to say what you think about vaccination and that's your public comment.
Okay. I can say that now?
Yes.
Sorry. My internet, Monterey internet. Um, okay. Anyway, I was hoping to hear more about how the decision was made. I heard that there was a decision not to require mandated vaccines for staff. My name is Carly. I am a certified nurse midwife at J State Medical Center. I have a fifth grader Phoebe. And what I know in the past couple of months, all health systems in the area have moved towards mandatory vaccines. And I know that we have done this because we know that it is safer for patients. It's safer for staff. It makes the agency run more efficiently when we don't have as many people out for COVID, strict testing, COVID exposures. And I'm just wondering why this isn't a good enough example for public education to follow suit. I feel like we are all taking care of the public. We're taking care of vulnerable populations who might not have choices about where they can receive their healthcare, where they can receive their education. And I just feel like we, as public servants, owe it to the people we serve to make the safest decision when we're taking care of them.
Thank you very much, Carly, for your expert advice. And you'll be hearing more about it later in the, in the session. Dana?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dana Voracek. I am the parent of a third grader at New Marlboro Central. I just want to reiterate what I just heard from Carly in that I was dismayed to hear that a mask mandate had been voted down. And I'm interested to hear a little bit more about the background as to why, especially in the environment where all of the elementary kids, of course, are not eligible to be vaccinated. Why, why the teachers should decide or the school board should decide not to, not to mandate. Thanks.
I think Alana, you have your hand up.
Thanks. My name's Elana Steinhauer. I live at 94 Root Lane in Sheffield. I too am the mother of two children in the school district, as well as I'm a nurse practitioner. I'm the executive director at Volunteers in Medicine, and I sit on the countywide health initiative organizations, which is, includes Berkshire Health Systems, Regional Planning, the Public Health Nurses. You know, I think it's, this is disappointing. Berkshire Hills implemented this plan with, per their superintendent, who I spoke with this week, with no pushback from the teachers. There was maybe one teacher. They've had no issue. Our biggest employer, the health system, is showing us that this is an important thing to do. It's not a choice that we get to make. We've been working with COVID patients this entire year and we know the impact it has. Biden, just today, is mandating all federal workers to have the vaccine. He is not allowing testing to be an opt-out. He's also mandating that all Head Start employees have this, and he is now encouraging every single governor of every state to mandate schools to mandate the vaccine for teachers. We are a school that is always saying that we want to be on top of things, that we care about our students. It is extremely important for this school board to lead by example and mandate this vaccine for teachers and hopefully when, when able for the students as well.
Emma, Dan?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Anna Deetjen. I'm a global health pediatrician and have two kids in the school in Undermountain and New Marlboro. I just want to reiterate the highly recommendation by the CDC that all teachers and staff in schools should be vaccinated. And if you do not implement a mandate to be vaccinated, I'd like to know what your policies are or your procedures to encourage teachers to get vaccinated and otherwise to have regular testing and show their testing results. And if you know which ones are vaccinated, which ones are not. We're dealing with the Delta variant, which is highly contagious. You've probably seen recent reports on outbreaks where unvaccinated teachers infected more than 50% of their class. So, yeah, that's my comment. Thank you.
All right. So I see one more hand up. Gavin?
It's, it's Tika, um, mother of Gavin and Mason, seventh and ninth graders. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
So, um, I would like to take a slightly different tack on this. Um, I feel like this is always about a question of individual rights versus safety of the community. And it was very clear on the last time that we had a meeting that this, the school board is entrusted in the safety and well-being of the community as a whole. So I'm wondering how it is that we are supporting the rights of the teachers who choose not to get vaccinated over the vulnerable population of the elementary schoolers who don't have a choice to get vaccinated and protect themselves and also don't have a choice perhaps where they can receive their education. Thank you.
Thank you. And. Okay, Katie, I can't read the names back here.
Hi, I'm with Katie. My name is Jenny Andrews, and I have a, a little boy who's in the preschool at New Marlboro. I, we live in Monterey and I work at the Fairview Hospital ER. What we're seeing there is that cases are going up in all the schools around the area. My concern is that we'll have a year like last year where we have two weeks of school and then we have to shut down. We know that the vaccine, vaccine protects the community. We know that it's a very low-risk vaccination. And just like everyone else who's spoken before, I feel like it's, it's the right thing to do for a teacher of vulnerable, unvaccinated children to, to make the choice to, to help protect them so that we can have a more normal school year and also so that we can see the end of this pandemic, which right now, if you're deciding not to get vaccinated, my question is, where does it end? Do we just have teachers wearing masks for the, for the end, the rest of time? I just wonder what the ultimate plan is if you're choosing to get unvaccinated at this time. Thank you.
Amanda Jimmelinsky.
Hi. So I just want to add that, um, we, the district speaks about working towards racial equality and equity for a disease that so disproportionately impacted people of color. How can a district promote equity and not take action that would clearly reduce the risk for this population? I'm assumed to be RN, um, so I also have some medical experience. And I've been treating COVID patients at Berkshire Medical Center since the beginning of the pandemic.
Thank you very much. And Lauren High. If you've finished speaking, can you put your hand down so I can keep track of who, who's been, who has had a chance? I think we have Lauren High.
I just wanted to, to mention to the group that, um, and I'm in favor of vaccinations for the staff at Southern Berkshire School District. My brother lives in South Carolina where that, where that's not a thing. And his children, since the beginning of August, have gone to school for three days because they were exposed. They had to quarantine. They were exposed again. They had to quarantine again. My sister-in-law is a teacher and my brother owns his own business, so one of them wasn't able to be paid for that day. So I was hoping for vaccinations for Southern Berkshire Regional School District staff so that I don't have to work at home again with my children at home again. And other people don't have to make that choice to either leave their kids at home alone again or, um, be, be faced with the choice of which parent has to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of you parents who share our interest in the safety of kids. And we will be dealing with the issue a little bit later in the meeting. All right. In the new business, we are approving lateral movement of two people on the unit A salary scale. If you want to look at those two people, and then I'll take a motion to approve.
A motion to accept the lateral moves if unit A's salary schedule effective September 1st, 2021 is presented today.
And that's Jeffrey Blaugrind, and a second from?
Second.
Arthur Knackey. And. I would, is there any discussion on this? All right. We'll take a roll call vote. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell? Danell?
Sorry. Yes.
Okay. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, I see there's a hand up there where, that I didn't see during public comment. I don't know whether it went up after we finished it.
I think it went up like in the same time.
Yeah. So I don't want you to feel cut off. If you have something new to add that hasn't been said, please let us know. Another point of view.
Yes. Hello. Thank you. I'm Alex Papa Chrisdo. I have three children in the district. And unlike the other very impressive commentators, I'm not a public health or a medical professional. I'm a lawyer, and my concern is the liability that the district will face from families whose children are infected by unvaccinated teachers and the increase in insurance premiums that the district will have to pay for failing to comply with CDC recommendations. You know, what, what is the legal liability here? Should we consider that? And, and, and does that not outweigh the, uh, the, the unquantifiable cost of giving teachers the freedom to choose not to be vaccinated in the face of overwhelming evidence that it's a safe procedure that benefits everyone, the vaccinated person and everyone she or he has contact with? We need to be serious about the legal consequences and the financial consequences of this policy. We, we cannot put the taxpayers at risk of higher taxes to subsidize the, the choice of teachers to be irresponsible in the face of overwhelming evidence that the vaccination is safe and beneficial to everyone. Thank you.
All right. Now I think you've heard everyone. I think you've done my cover. Okay. So now we are going to share the MOU that you've been working on with the teachers regarding masks and that vaccination. I don't know whether we, whether the public, how do we share that with the public? Do we read it?
We don't, we just say. It comes out of executive session and the recommendation. Someone comes out of executive session with the recommendation.
Yeah, okay. It doesn't have to be right. Okay. All right. So, um, I'll take a motion for the approval of the unit A, D, and E MOU discussion executive session.
So moved.
So that's Dennis, a senior.
Second.
Second from Bonnie Silver. And I'll entertain a discussion. I see that Danell has her hand up. Just want to see who else on the committee wants to say anything. And maybe. Okay, so Danell?
Um, I have a question. Um, this might be, uh, I'm not sure if I can do this now or if I wait till after we go on with this motion. Can I make a motion? Or do we have to wait till after this motion?
Well, unless, I, I think we have to go through this motion and then I'll entertain your motion.
Unless, Danell, you're amending this motion.
Um, I, the motion was to vote on what we discussed in the executive session. Is that what it was?
Yes.
Okay. I can't amend that. I, um, again, I'll just state if we are discussing, um, um, this is pointed with the number of faculty and staff that have chosen to not be vaccinated and not respond to our requests for vaccination status and are not medically exempt. I think that our number is low. And I think that keeping our kids safe and in this realm of where we are right now in the Delta variant blowing through school systems right now, just flashing news right now. There's school systems in California that are now mandating everybody 12 and older be vaccinated. And that's including kids and faculty and staff because right now the cases are going up and up and up. And since school started there with children, these are our children. Let's try to keep them safe. Not mandating vaccines is not, it's not doing that.
Jeff? Can you, I think, come around here?
No, I'll speak directly and loudly. Can you hear me online, Danell?
Yeah.
Okay. I see that's true. Beth, can you? So going back to two meetings prior to this meeting, we made a resolution to table or motion to table a decision about vaccine, vaccine requirements because the unions were in the process of surveying their, their members as to their vaccination status. The following meeting, which was the last meeting we had, it was reported around 76% had self-reported that they were vaccinated. And what we made a motion was a non-binding resolution. Um, motion, not resolution, sorry, non-binding motion for the unions to report, verify with proof of identification, uh, proof of vaccination or with a waiver as to that status by September 3rd. Can you report what those numbers are now that we are now facing that is changing? Um, can you report what those numbers are now that we are now facing that has changed from not having any information two minutes, meaning three meetings ago, the last meeting to tonight?
So the number that I had as right before coming in here is that um we have a hundred and fifty-two out of the hundred and seventy total staff who have reported. There are a hundred and forty-two are fully vaccinated. Ten have either a medical waiver, a religious waiver, or it could be somewhere in the process. Maybe, you know, have received the first shot but are not fully vaccinated. But that's within the ten. So we're at eighty-three point five percent um fully vaccinated, uh, five point nine percent in the waiver or not fully vaccinated. And we are still waiting for um the the remainder of the responses.
I have some more questions to bring clarification to the body, head and chair. If you mind if I can ask you a question. Um, now, I think a point of clarification that's really important that I think everybody in the community wants to understand is why do we have this MOU? Why can't we just? Well, what in in if we didn't have the MOU, we just mandated the vaccine vaccine, what would be the implications on our ability to have recourse with faculty and staff who choose not to be vaccinated? And whatnot. If you could walk us through that, that'd be good.
So um, whatever policy is set by um the school committee, right? Number one, local policy trumps any guidance. So there was a mask guidance by the state um that was going through till, you know, October one, but this committee did their own policy. Um, and it is um that, you know, we're having masks inside regardless of vaccination status because we know our youngest learners, uh, you know, don't have the ability to be. So as an extra safety precaution, um, that's why the mask mandate is on. Um, but the point of uh an MOU is that you always have to in bargain the impact of whatever policy or condition to uh work. Uh, that that has to be impact bargain with um the union. So um by having both the school committee and the SBREA um approve the MOA requiring either you that you are vaccinated or that you will submit to um mandatory weekly pool testing. Um, because you have a waiver or you have um for medical religious reasons, um, or you have not completed the vaccination process. It actually has the ability to um give us, uh, you know, some teeth, meaning that we have disciplinary of um ability based on people non-compliant with this MOA.
Okay, just to emphasize that point. If we did not have an MOA in place, we do not have recourse as a district to implement a recourse for somebody not following the policy.
You have to bargain the impact of the change in work condition.
Got it. Um, now, I think a key piece of the MOU that I would like to just clarify, make sure that we're aware of, we're voting on. Um, and I'm sorry, bear with me. Unless somebody has it right at their fingertips. Basically, this is a the there's a provision in this MOU that if we were to execute against or if we authorize our chair to sign the MOU, provided the approval of the unit, the 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 different uh union units that at any point in time, this can be revisited, amended, and looked at. So as situations change, more information is fluid, this is not tying our hands that we cannot revisit this issue, say tomorrow. It so be like it is, we have this ability to do this. If you could be very clear for us, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, this says this agreement may be revisited at any time for any reason. Including and then, you know, non-compliance, blah, 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 blah. So we are seeing this as a fluid document. A first step to get the message out to faculty and staff that we want them to be vaccinated. We want, we now have evidence of who is vaccinated and who is not vaccinated and who has to be tested. And we, it is our hope that without a mandate, the compliance will come together. If we're not happy with how things are going, if we watch the numbers rise and uh uh, information coming in, then we will come back together and uh revisit. I think that's what we decided in our executive session.
I'm sorry, I was monopolizing. I see two of my colleagues actually have their hands.
That's okay. They'll be given their time. Uh, Bonnie? And then uh, Danell, uh, let's see. Uh, I think we, this is not, I I see Amy Scott her hand up. This is the discussion from the public was prior to our meeting. So we have a policy of once the meeting was started and we're in discussion, we don't bring the public back into the discussion. Um, so Bonnie?
All right, so first, as somebody who was and is completely in favor of mandating vaccinations for every single person on our staff. I believe as a temporary measure we have put in in this MOA, especially with the numbers that we received from the superintendent. That one, nobody comes into our building who is not masked regardless of vaccination status. Everybody is masked. Two, I, at our meeting of the negotiation subcommittee yesterday, we made it very clear to the SBREA that it is imperative that they are more active in dealing with individuals who have not responded to our, all of our polite requests. Um, and a promise was made that there will be follow-up for those individuals who may be totally vaccinated but have not submitted the necessary information. So we are protecting everybody in terms of masks. We now know, including those people who are exempt either because of religious or medical reasons, we are up over eighty-five percent. So we are now dealing with fewer than twenty people. It only takes one person to infect, and as I mentioned to my colleagues, I know of at least two people on our staff who are working despite doctors' recommendations that they should retire and not take a chance of exposure. I believe that this gives us, with the fact that we have in the MOA a line which tells us if they do not comply with what we have put forward, there is, we have the right for disciplinary actions to take place. I think for September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, we are covering ourselves um in a way where we are meeting all necessary challenges. As many people have pointed out, it's a shame that we do not have state leadership, and this is a problem in so many states that are saying every public school employee must be vaccinated. There is no reason that should we pass this MOA and authorize Jane to sign it. It is very clear in this that it is a temporary document. We can follow up very quickly and have another meeting if we're not getting those other eighteen people to submit. We can follow up within days with another meeting where, in my opinion, we mandate, we mandate vaccinations for everyone who is not either medically exempt or religiously exempt. This gives us an action that protects us, I believe, as a school district as much as we can at this point for the next three weeks. And hopefully, the promise made by the SBREA last night means they will be more proactive for the sake of the greatest majority of their membership in going after the other eighteen people. So for that reason, knowing we have an option for a further action, meeting, and vote um, that I believe it is important to support this for the upcoming three weeks. That's my comment.
All right, so um, Danell, uh, I, do you have something? Uh, you've made a statement before, so if this is, if it's a different statement, um, I'll hear it. Otherwise, I'll come back to you after we vote on this.
I mean, if it mean, I know, I know Carrie Anne and Kara have had their hands up. If it, will they still be able to speak too?
I'll come back to you after, uh, I send Dennis.
You can come back to me.
On the road here and I'm ignoring you. So the these pictures are very small up here, so it's kind of hard to see the hand. So Carrie Anne?
Thank you. Um, so um, given what Bonnie just said in terms of how the uh MOU is um worded, it seems like we can pass this MOU and then in our unfinished business, we can then put, make a motion to passive vaccination policy. There's nothing that requires us to wait twenty-four hours or there's no time requirement that asks us to wait. So we can both sign this and get any protections that we need associated with the MOU. And we can also um put to a vote having a vaccination policy all in this one meeting.
Uh, Tara?
May I respond to that?
Um, well, let's, I think let's let Karen speak and um Dennis speak and then uh then you. Okay?
Thanks. I um, I was actually going to ask for some, a little bit of clarification around what Carrie Anne just mentioned. Um, so maybe wh- when a response comes, um, I'll hear that. But I also just um, wanted to say I'm also very much in favor of a vaccine mandate. Um, and also um was sensitive to what Beth was sharing about um a large number of employment vacancies within the district. And how um I know a lot of social agencies are faced with this right now in terms of being between a rock and a hard place. Um, so I just, I was, um, I wanted to appreciate that you shared that information.
Okay, Dennis?
Just connect a couple of comments in terms of, I I think we're overstressing the value of the vaccine. Basically, if you've been following what's going on in this whole COVID thing, one of the things that people now understand are that even if you have a vaccine with the new variants, you can be a spreader. The big thing about what's great about masks are that masks stop spreading. The best thing that we have going for us is that we have an agreement, but we haven't had the force on the bargaining units that basically say, you know, we're gonna be, we're we're gonna be the leaders in masking. Right now, I I personally, although I was of the mode that I, you know, I wanted everybody to be mandatory, you know, uh, uh, basically be uh Indianized, uh, you know, I have changed a hundred percent on that. The most important thing in my view that we can do is what we already have in our plan that's been agreed to by the bargaining minutes, which is the masking. But that's the biggest safety factor that we can put in place and control. That's my comment.
All right, so um Bonnie wanted to respond to uh go ahead.
Um, to what Carrie Anne said, it it's it's so not as um simple as what you said. You can't be entering in good faith into an MOU that says this is what we're agreeing to. What we can do is have a a motion that says if by three weeks, we do not have the other respondents. I mean, we could come up with something that means we don't let this go for any amount of time. But we can't be authorizing Jane to sign this upon the action of the SBREA and at the same time negating our approval. We have to look at what if if the sentiment is, you know, we are, we are by this getting agreement apropos of what Dennis said. Nobody is pulling anything about taking a mask off it when they're in a classroom. Everybody is agreeing to a mask. I think what we can do is we definitely can take further action, but we can't take further action tonight to negate if we approve this MOA to say no, you know, the other side of us is we don't believe it. I think um, as I said, this gives us the teeth. Um, and I, you have to understand also, I think something that was Beth made very clear to us is she's been using her time and the administrative team going after people. I mean, no, obviously, no one in the world signed up to be COVID monitors. But our priority is let's get education going. And hopefully, the union leadership got our message and they will go after these other eighteen people. This MOA or MOU, whatever it's called, will give us the ability to get started and the knowledge that we're dealing with eighteen people. I do think we can come up with something, Carrie Anne, that addresses what I think you want, I want, Danell wants, and probably a couple of others. We want everybody to stop being so selfish. But for right now, I would have to support our authorizing Jane to sign this, which gives us a guaranteed mask policy and gives us the fact that disciplinary action can be taken against those who are not following um any mandates that are put in place. And there is also a line which has not been brought up because I don't think everybody has this. But it is clear, if there is anything further that is needed in terms of changes in the situation, there is immediately a meeting of the superintendent, the SBREA president, and we added tonight, our school committee chair or representative would have to take part in any meetings, which could take place two days from now, if there are people who turn around to the SBREA and say, forget it, I'm not giving you the information. I'm not complying. That's a change of working circumstances, and we can act upon that immediately. So we've got more teeth in this than I think might appear on the surface.
All right, so uh, Danell, do you want to reserve your comments for when we get to the vaccination unfinished business section? Or do you think it needs to?
Isn't that where we are now? Isn't that where we are now?
No, no, we're in the M O U. Uh, and there's a discussion of vaccination policy.
I'll just say a couple of quick things just to, so, cuz it's fresh in my head in response to Bonnie. Real quick, um, I don't understand why we're waiting. Um, let's do this and see, see what happens. This is the third school committee meeting that we have had addressing this. I don't know what waiting again is gonna do and we still have eighteen people who refuse to even answer our question. So after three school committee meetings of us talking about this, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't have, um, any faith in this changing anything. Um, what I want is a mask or a vaccine mandate. We have mask mandates. I want a vaccine mandate. Dennis, thank you for your comments. Um, but not only am I a medical professional, we have heard from some very highly regarded and respective medical, respected medical professionals from the public comment in our community. Um, if, I don't know what news you're listening to, but, um, vaccinations are the way to stop this. Um, we heard that President Biden is going to instate, he is recommending that school systems make a vaccine mandate. Why not? Why do we have to wait for the state to, to put this through? We did it on masks. We can do this with vaccines too and be a little bit more forward thinking. That's it.
Danell? Okay, so you've made your point. You can bring it up with the policy section. This particular item is whether we're voting on the M O U that we looked at earlier tonight, so. Um, let's, let's take the vote. Um, I've gotta get my yeses and noes column here. Okay, so, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell? No?
Am I allowed to call a point of order cuz I don't understand the implications of my yes or no vote in this moment after our conversation? I need some clarification about what a yes vote means, what a no vote means.
So I'm telling you that as we stated in our executive session, we discussed the M O U, we took a vote, we are doing the same vote in public right now. Then if people want to, as Bonnie suggested, in the unfinished business section, make a statement that if we do not um, get compliant with the M O U, we will be uh, putting a vaccination policy on. Uh, we will vote again on the vaccination policy because this M O U uh, way of going was ineffective. But we're not right now amending the M O U and we are basically.
I'll be up as soon as I can. This is just super important, okay?
Well, you might want to. So.
Don't worry about it, Danell.
So.
So then if the, so because this was not clarified, clear, um, clear to me in executive session, if we've, the only way to revisit whether to require a vaccination mandate at this meeting right now is to vote no on this M O U. Is that correct?
Because what we said was this M O U is to encourage teachers to line up with their information and staff. Then we said, if we don't get the results that we were hoping for, we will go back and consider a vaccine mandate. I, I think we discussed that it wasn't a productive move to, um, and I don't know what, what actually the legal situation is because in executive session you made a vote and I'm not sure it's changeable. What, what do we, what's the story on that?
You're supposed to come out and, and report in public what happened in executive session. That was the recommendation. Then you can have any discussion you want further down on the agenda, but that's what's supposed to happen.
Yeah, because the vote, uh, in executive session was uh, six yeses and two noes. So that's for the M O U.
I mean, I think what's important here is, is no one's saying yes or no on the vaccination mandate. What they're saying is we're trying to get some teeth around, making sure those who aren't, and there, there are legitimate exceptions, right? There are medical and there are legitimate exceptions. All we're saying is those people will be, um, initially tested. So if we're saying that we're trying to cover every base possible. So I don't think we're gonna get to a hundred percent, but we're, we're getting as close as we can. And this gives us disciplinary action for those who are just choosing not to report. We just need to know where you are so we know where to, um, focus our efforts to make sure everybody stays. Does that help at all? Whether you agree or not, I mean, I don't, you know, whatever you believe, I'm, I'm just saying that's what the point of this is as a start, if nothing else.
Jeff?
Would it make sense to read the M O U?
No, I, uh, uh, not necessarily.
No.
No. All right, so. How you doing?
Please share the M O U.
For me?
That was not someone to be as familiar.
No, I can't, I don't think you can share it until it's signed.
That was, that was someone who shouldn't have spoken that was the public.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Got it. Sorry.
Yeah, okay, so, um. I'm gonna take, uh, a public vote here on supporting the M O U as a first step and not a last step. I guess that's as clear as I can call it. Uh, and I would say that voting for this does not mean that you does not indicate a lack of interest in a vaccine mandate. It indicates a, an acceptance of this as a part of the process of getting to a safe situation in our school. That clarifying?
I think Julie's point that she mentioned about the M O U and why it cannot be shared right now is because it's not yet been signed by the union or our school committee. So it's not yet a public document and as soon as it is signed.
It will become a public document.
It will become public. And I apologize for not understanding that nuance in my request.
Okay. All right, so now, uh, Jeffrey? Um, while we're voting, as to you, you, uh, the approval of an M O U as part of a process of getting a safe situation.
Yes.
Okay, so yes for, uh, you. Danell?
No.
Carrie Anne?
Did you say Carrie Anne?
All right.
Um. I, I don't, I don't know what to, I, I'm. Are you telling me that I'm legally required to make the same exact vote that I did in executive session in the public session?
I don't think, I don't know, but I think you are supposed to keep the vote you had because we're, we're basically going into the public with what we did. So, but I, I can't, that's not a definitive.
Okay, well, without, you know, full legal understanding of like my requirements and, you know, a deeper training in, in the ins and outs of executive versus public session, I'm going to make my vote no and suffer any legal ramifications for that vote.
Well, the legal ramifications aren't just you, it's the entire committee, by the way.
I have information here now in public session that was not explained to me during executive session of the implications of doing the M O U. So I have to vote with the best information that I have now in public session.
I don't understand that either, but okay.
I can explain it in terms of that I do, I was not, I, it was not clear to me that by voting yes for the M O U, I was told that this gives us teeth to, you know, and legal standing in terms of creating a contract with the union. I did not understand that we are then according, at least to Bonnie, that we are unable at this same meeting to make a, um, to, to talk, to vote a vaccine mandate, especially when that was what was on the agenda. I, that, my understanding was that we were voting on a vaccine mandate. So that was, that's my, the source of my misunderstanding.
Well, in the future, if it doesn't say vote required, it, it means that it's not necessary, it is not. It's a discussion, not a vote.
We've voted on things before that don't say vote required, so I wasn't taking that to mean that that's the only opportunity for us to vote.
Okay, I'm, uh, so where are we? Arthur?
I'm staying.
Cara?
I'm, I'm feeling really uncomfortable with this if it's a requirement to vote the same as yes as we did before. I mean, after hearing all the public comments, it's hard for me to, to vote.
Well, you know what? I don't think the public understands, uh, the relationship between the district and the union and the teachers. Uh, we all feel very passionate about how we want our children to be safe. Uh, many of the schools mandated, uh, vaccines and then went to the unions later and you don't hear about what's happening actually behind the scenes. So I'm sorry that, and I, I think we all are very passionate about the safety of our students, but, um, it's unfortunate that we can't carry on our, I, I'm gonna let, I, I, it's not. We're not supposed to have a discussion in the middle of a vote. So, um, I'm a little stuck. Jeff, can you help me?
I have a question.
Yeah.
My question is, and I don't know, Beth, if you have an answer for this. If we vote yes on this, in my opinion, there is nothing that would stop me from making a motion that says if on nine twenty-seven, we do not have one hundred percent compliance in terms of information that a special school committee meeting will be held on nine thirty to mandate vaccines. So therefore, I can enter, I can vote yes on this, correct? And I'm carrying through and accepting this M O U. But I'm saying if the SBREA doesn't carry through and we don't have a hundred percent information on nine twenty-seven that I want, um, I want to introduce a motion that will say that on nine thirty, there will be a special school committee meeting to mandate vaccines. I don't think I'm violating anything if I vote the way I did and then have a motion such as I stated.
You never get out of the ditch. We're voting on an M O U.
Right, I can vote for the M O U. And then during Jane, and when we get to the part of the agenda that says unfinished business discussion on vaccine policy, I can bring up that motion which I think addresses what Cara and Carrie Anne brought up.
Yeah, I think that's, that's appropriate.
Okay, all right, so when you call on me, I have an answer.
Okay.
Voting.
So we're in, in the middle of Cara, uh, concerning what she's gonna do. I don't know whether what you said helps her decide. Because I, I do wanna warn you that this whole vote might get thrown out once I talk to Josh tomorrow, so. Um. Yeah, I don't.
I don't think this is appropriate.
So I think.
Can I abstain? I can't, I just can't move forward with it.
Might as well just be done, but the point is that now we've made it less, we've made things less efficient than.
Okay, so I think we're gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, I don't think this vote is legal. I, and so I, I don't think you, so I think what we're gonna do is suspend the vote. We will let the union vote on it and we'll come back to it, uh, at another, as soon as we can hold another meeting just for this purpose and I will check with Josh about what to do. I don't see proceeding this anything.
Well, you're in the middle of a vote. Don't you have to get the rest of the vote?
Because I don't want it. I don't want it to get defeated. I want, I want, I think we have violated procedural things to such a degree that it would be an invalid vote one way or the other.
How do you know it's gonna be defeated? You still have, how many people haven't voted?
Because you don't like the way it's going.
No, 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 I'm just saying we shouldn't be having this discussion in.
We didn't handle it properly.
Uh, Robert's rule says once a vote started, no discussion happened, is that right? So we've had all sorts of discussion here, so this should be, I don't see this as a valid vote, but you're a Robert's rules guy, so tell me.
Well, if, if Robert's rule says, once you start the vote, you vote. I mean, you, you, I mean, we have people that are saying they're unsure, whatever, ever, I mean, but, you know, if you let them bubble along on that, yes, but, you know, the point is, everybody that's on the committee needs to vote.
Have to vote.
I'm just, I wanna check with Dennis here, but once there's been cross discussion, which is not allowable, have we not poisoned the vote?
That's a, that's a very great, very.
Okay.
You know, that's, have, have we allowed more than what should be allowed? Absolutely.
Absolutely.
The point is, you say, this is what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Okay, it was distributed to everybody.
Yeah.
They had it in their hands. Then it's a, we go down and vote on it. We had the, we had the discussion at the start.
Yeah.
Then once you called the vote, then it's everybody either votes, and they, they can vote, they can abstain, they can say yes, they can say no, that's it.
But, but, okay, so you have an, I mean, you're not our lawyer, but you're our parliamentarian. Since we had an executive session and we had a vote already. And the point of bringing it out to the public is to report what we voted. So now people are changing their vote in between. What's your opinion on that?
I mean, that, that's a difficult, you know.
Yeah.
But, you know.
But I don't think you could stop the vote. Um, I agree. You're in the middle of a vote.
You can vote differently in executive session than how you vote in the public meeting. There's nothing wrong with that. All right. I see, it's ugly.
Yeah. But, you know. Well, we can continue with the vote.
There's nothing that ties the two together.
Well, I think, uh, we can continue the vote. I'm gonna talk to Josh tomorrow and if, in his opinion, this is not valid. He can listen to this and let us know if we have to come back and do it again.
I'll just finish it and, and it won't matter.
Yeah. All right, so we are at, we have a one yes, one no. Uh, Carrie Anne is a no and, um, Arthur is a.
Abstain.
Cara is deciding what, and you wanna abstain cuz an abstention is a no, by the way.
Right, I didn't know if there was anything different about a no versus abstain during, because of the executive session vote versus the public vote. But if no is no, then that's fine.
Okay, um, Dennis?
Yes.
Uh, Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yeah. So we have one, two. One, two.
Four yeses.
Yeah, so it's a tie.
It does not care.
So it doesn't care. All right, we're going on. Uh, item C is a discussion regarding contracting with minute solutions for future meetings. So when we first hired them, we had a, we made a decision to review the quality and the cost and decide whether that was the way we wanted. and decide whether that was the way we wanted to continue or whether we wanted to hire, uh, someone, uh, for the purpose of doing in-person minutes. So I would, uh, like to have a motion regarding, uh, keeping Minute Solutions, uh, on to, for future meetings.
So moved.
Second.
So, uh, we have Arthur voting, uh, Arthur motioning and Jeffrey seconding. Is there any discussion? Uh, I, I do have some figures here because we were told that it was two hundred dollars for two hours. And, um, we've had, during May through now, we've had two two-hour meetings, uh, two, two and a half hour meetings, and one three-hour meeting. So the, the highest cost we had was two sixty, and then the others were two hundred, just for your information. Bonnie, your hand is up. Did you wanna say?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Okay.
Didn't take a tab from before.
Yeah. Anybody else have any comments here? So, uh, being satisfied or not satisfied?
I think it's, they're doing a good job and, um, it's a more efficient use of resources. So I think it's.
Okay. So I'm gonna take a roll, Paul Boat. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Uh, Danelle?
Yes. Yep. Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, okay. I want, uh, the minute taker can report back that we're very pleased with how, um, Minute Solutions has served us over these couple of months. All right, now we're going to unfinished business and our discussion of, um, our w- working out a vaccination policy if, if needed. So, um, Bonnie had a motion in mind?
Yes. I move that if on September twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, the SBRSD does not have one hundred percent of faculty and staff compliant with vaccination guidelines as outlined by the superintendent, that the school committee hold a special school committee meeting on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, and mandate vaccinations.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, so that was Bonnie, that motion, and Jeffrey second. Is there a discussion of this?
I would just like to say, when I, I wanna make sure from Beth, that when, um, compliant means that they either have shown you their vaccination card or have a medical exemption that's been approved by you and the nursing staff, or a religious exemption that's approved by you, or they have let you know, Beth, that they are, by showing you their vaccination card, that they are in the process of becoming fully vaccinated. That's what your guidelines are, correct?
They are. And then anybody who doesn't meet those guidelines would be automatically put into the full testing.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, Danelle?
So I was gonna make a motion as well. Um, I don't know if I do that separately, or maybe just ask Bonnie if she would amend her motion.
Ask me if I'll amend my motion, since my motion's on the floor.
I know what your answer is, but may I amend your motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to amend Bonnie's motion by mandating vaccination for all faculty and staff by October fifteenth, the Friday.
They may not be able to be fully vaccinated by.
Well, okay, at least one dose. Uh, you're right, at least one dose of, um, the vaccination. Um, I, I just don't know why we're, we're waiting for them to report their status. I, I don't get it.
I will totally accept the amendment that anybody, anybody that's a hundred percent and that the deadline to have at least one vaccine is October fifteenth. You're more generous than I am.
Is that?
Cause my original one was fully vaccinated by the fifteenth. So I'm accepting your amendment. Um, Jeff, will you accept, will you second the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, what about exemptions and exceptions?
The exemptions and all have to be by the twenty-seventh of September.
No, but the, you keep, uh, the, all faculty and staff need to be vaccinated by, uh, October fifteenth, start vaccination by October fifteenth, or produce a medical or religious.
By nine, by nine twenty-seven, we need a hundred percent of respondents. They will either tell Beth, show, that Beth will have the card showing what's going on, that they will have a medical on, by the twenty-seventh, or religious by the twenty-seventh, and that anybody who is in that, of that group of eighteen going ahead and getting vaccine, vaccinated, must be vaccinated, the first one, excepting Danelle's amendment by the fifteenth of October. But I'm saying, by nine twenty-seven, Beth must know the full status of everybody employed in our district, SBRE member or not.
Jane?
Yeah.
May I speak more?
Yes, you may.
Um, I'm confused now by the dates that I, so I, the whole amendment is confused on me. Danelle, with dates of the twenty-seventh and the requirement on the fifteenth, the started vaccines, are you seeing a conflict in those two dates?
A conflict? Um, I, I'm not sure we, we need the twenty-seventh date. Um, but, yeah, I'm not sure. I also, and looking at the calendar, um, it's not even the fifteenth of. I don't know. I, I, ideally, I would like fifteen, uh, this, by the fifteenth to be fully vaccinated, but I, I'm not sure. It, there's three to four weeks between each vaccine, so I think it's doable, but I'm, yeah, I'm not sure where the twenty-seventh comes in. That's just, um.
It's, the twenty-seventh is because I'm saying that if by the twenty-seventh, we don't have a hundred percent information, Jane has to call a meeting.
Okay.
Forty-eight hours' notice on the thirtieth to pass what, what you just said.
But if I, but if my, my part of the motion is mandating the vaccines anyway by a certain date, then do we, would we need that emergency meeting?
Uh, Danelle, I think that if there's a, um, I'm going to entertain the notion that if we, uh, the five, five, two, I'm gonna bring it back and see if, uh, we can get it to pass a second time. And that gives us a chance for the, those teachers that for whatever reason, I think we demonize that they haven't done it in a malicious way. We don't know what their family situations are, that, that what could have gotten in the way of them getting it done in this time period. So, um, I think uh, if we have an, I, I'm hoping that we can get a signature on this MOU from the union, and I intend to bring it back to the full committee. This thing, you can reject it again, but if we have this other motion after this three-time period, they have come forward with their information and their cards, then this other thing goes into effect.
Um.
Bonnie's putting out there. Does that make it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I was just trying to attach my motion to Bonnie's so it could go through. I, I, I have no, want no part of the motion where it's asking just for a response from people. I, I wanted a motion for a vaccine mandate.
That's what this is. In other words, you're saying you won't accept a religious or a medical exemption?
Of course. If, if they have a medical exemption, that they can, absolutely cannot be vaccinated, of cour-, I mean, of course. That's, yeah, I, I mean, exemptions, yes, but of the, the non, the responses, I mean, we can assume that they're not vaccinated. So.
Well, that's why my view is saying on the twenty-seventh, Beth has to have all that information. Should she not have all that information, Jane is calling a special meeting on the thirtieth for the purpose of mandating a vaccine.
Right. So I get that. I just don't, I don't agree with the waiting, cause we've already waited. It's been seven days past our deadline from the last meeting, and we still have this high number of people that just haven't responded. I, yeah, I'm not talking about the exemptions. I get that. It's, it's the people that just chose not to respond. I.
Okay, so Danelle, it's, uh, about ten percent of, of the full faculty and staff. So, uh, I think we've got a motion on the floor. I don't, it doesn't sound like Bonnie, you wanna amend your motion to.
We already amended it.
No, we amended it to put the fifteenth, to put it in Danelle's, um, amendment.
I didn't, I didn't hear a second on the amendment.
That was.
Jeff, Jeff, Jeff seconded it.
Okay.
But, may, may, because I think this motion is a mess right now. Um, and we have to back our way out or just vote this down and start a new with a new amendment, a new motion, because this is, I don't even know what we're voting on anymore.
Well, I'll read what we said. Uh, if on September twenty-seventh, the union has not, uh, had a hundred per, uh, percent compliance in reporting vaccination status or religious or medical exemption, we will have a special meeting on September thirtieth to, uh, pass a ma-, uh, vaccine mandate that all faculty and staff should begin vaccination by October fifteenth.
By October fifteenth, please.
So it says.
This is, the dates are so confusing in my head right now.
Yeah, really clear. Danelle, your objective is every single person who is not exempt has at least one vaccine by October fifteenth, right?
Well, it's over mine. I think it's fair to say fully vaccinated.
Well, but I, if we had one. Cause if, if this, the way this was written by Bonnie in the first place was we were gonna pass the mandate on the thirtieth, so you can't be fully not vaccinated in two weeks from the thirtieth. You could be started two weeks from the thirtieth, but you couldn't be finished. I think that's what's getting, uh, Jeff a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do wanna mask me, and I just don't know why, I, yeah, I don't know why we're pushing it down the road to the thirtieth. I don't know why we just don't start from now. And I know, I, I mean, I know why. You've explained it. I guess I just don't agree.
Well, now that we haven't passed, un- unless Josh says to us that we have to vote in public the way we voted in executive session, we currently have not passed the MOA. Therefore, no holds barred.
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't, I would just like to interrupt the idea of passing something. I'm, I'm happy to have a meeting, uh, first thing next week, but I really wanna clarify the legality of what we just did before we, uh, pass something else that supersedes the legality that we just wrote. If you see what I'm saying.
I don't think we broke them in the mail.
Then why not, Jane, why don't we state right now, it'll give time to post it, that you pick out, as long as it's not Yom Kippur, that you post a meeting next week solely for this purpose?
Yeah, so we have, uh, Yom Kippur is this Monday. Today is fast day, one, so Wednesday we could meet. Am I right about those dates, Jeffrey?
Yom Kippur, it is, begins on Wednesday, the fifteenth. So you have forty-eight hours.
Okay, so we could post it tomorrow for Tuesday.
Tuesday, we have the RSD PB full meeting.
Yeah, well, we'll just, we'll do this before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, you're.
If I, if I could make a point.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Basically, we, we've shot ourselves in the foot.
Yeah.
And, and we've shot ourselves in the foot big time. I mean, we've gone from where, if we had come out and voted for what we had agreed to, you know, cause, you know, one, what Josh is gonna tell you is that you have to vote in public to make it happen. The fact that we voted for it in favor, you know, of, of the MOU in the executive session means nothing. We have to have agreed to that in a public meeting before that happens. And what we're doing now is we're moving farther away from creating safety for our children and our people by the actions that we're taking as a school committee. It's just downright, probably the dumbest thing I've ever seen in my life. You know, that we can't agree as a body to say, okay, let's take this first step that we know is gonna give us some level of safety, and then worry about this other thing, you know, next. I mean, we're, we're just acting irrationally. You know, it's, it's just stupid. I'm sorry to be blunt, but that's what it is.
All right. Well, we do have a motion on the floor that we, we now need to vote on. And. Yeah, so let's vote on the amendment, uh, which was.
Well, we voted on it once already.
No, we didn't, no.
I voted on it.
Not on the amendment.
Not.
It's like in the amendment.
Yeah, so we, uh, let's first, uh, get this. Bonnie, unless you wanna remove your whole motion, but we have a motion on the floor, as I read, which I can read again. And I think we have to vote whether we accept the amendment that was, uh, added by Danelle. Yeah.
In my understanding, your request, is, your preference is that we hold off until we hear from Josh as to what's. Or is there, are you asking, did I hear?
No, I mean, I, uh, don't, I, I don't think, you need, I think if the body wants to vote on this, they can do that. Uh, it may turn out, I, I remember when we, I first got on the committee and we voted improperly, we had to go back and re-vote, you know. So I wouldn't be surprised if we don't have to do it in this case, but I don't know for sure. So we can go ahead and do this, and then maybe it will be invalidated as well. So we can go ahead and do this and then maybe it will be invalidated as well. I can't really. Yeah, okay, so let's do, let's try this and see if people want to vote in favor of this, okay?
So for the amendment is the first vote?
Yeah, so I want the, uh, I want to know, the vote is to accept the amendment of. The special meeting. Will. On the thirtieth, will implement a mask mandate that all faculty and staff. That start their vaccinations by October fifteenth.
Vaccination, but not a mask.
Oh, did I say that? Yeah, okay. Okay? And is that clear to everybody?
Can you please repeat that? It was a little mumbly at points.
I'm going to take this off, just, uh. All right, so we, Bonnie's original motion of what. Was if on September twenty seventh, the union is not a hundred percent compliant in respect to showing the vaccination card or exemption, religious or medical.
Jane, Jane, it's gonna stop. It's not the union, it's every staff. And faculty member, all, whether, whether they're the REA or not.
Okay. Sorry. Uh, okay. We will have a special meeting on September thirtieth. The amendment is that, uh, that meeting, we will institute a vaccination mandate that all faculty and staff. Be, begin, uh, vaccination by October fifteenth. So what I think we're voting on is that additional, uh, vaccination mandate that all faculty and staff begin. Uh, back, uh, back immunization by October fifteenth.
So first to vote, point of order.
Yeah.
The vote for the amendment is that we're saying that there's a mandate that faculty, all faculty and staff are vaccinated by fifteenth.
Or.
First start. I have at least a first start.
Right.
So let's stay focused on that, I think, as opposed to giving the whole motion.
Right, okay, so that's what we're.
The amendment is just on the fifteenth of having. Vaccine.
Yeah.
Regardless of the response rate on the twenty-seventh.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. So, is that clear now?
Excuse me.
Okay, so Jeff?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Dennis?
No.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Uh, and Jane, yes, okay, so now we're going back to vote on the entire. Motion, which gives till the twenty-seventh for every staff member. Uh, to be compliant. In respect to showing the vaccination card or exemption. And if, if that is not the case, we will proceed to a special meeting on the thirtieth. To, uh, implement a vaccination mandate that all faculty and staff have their first vaccination by October fifteenth. All right, so I'm going to take a vote on that. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Uh, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur? Kara?
Yes.
Dennis?
No.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yeah. Okay. Now, uh, I'll be talking to, uh, Josh about what. What we do about the MOU. Because, uh, and I will be reporting, I think we probably should look for a meeting posted. For next week early, once I find out what he says, because I can't do business over the email with you. We have to meet in person for a short meeting. Okay? All right. So, um. It's being ten before nine, the regional school planning, district planning board does have a full meeting next week. On the fourteenth, so if you're interested in keeping up with what's going on there, it's a good thing to attend. And I, the one, don't have the energy to give you an update tonight. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything about how things are going? I do want to mention that Bonnie is working very closely with, on the surveys and. Trying to help make them as neutral as possible, and I thank you, Bonnie, for that.
You are welcome.
And then if we go down to the subcommittee reports, I think the one that's important to deal with is the community relations and public school. As a key subcommittee, because you have a project, uh, that you're trying to get done. And with Janice, um, not able to participate and Danil going away for two weeks. Uh, maybe you can give us a report, Danil, about the strategy for getting the newsletter out. I just, or maybe you don't have anything to say, given this, uh, or ask for help from whomever you need. Danil, are you there?
She's muted.
Danil, are you there? Yeah, she is muted, but I don't know that.
She might have responded to family.
I think she did. So, um. Bonnie, being a committee member. Do you have any comments about what's going to happen with the new?
Well, I think, I love what Carrie, thank you, Beth, what you and Carrie Giordano worked out with that. I, I said I would pitch in, but I know how super busy Jeff you are with your new job and all, but you're. If you would have any minutes to help. And then I was at C Dennis, who's really good on detail. Um, if we look at the topics, if we could get more help. Um, that would be great, and Jane, I know you said you would pitch in, so. If we can get more help, I think we could still plow ahead and get something out. At some.
Yeah, I think Danil is leaving, uh, maybe tomorrow even, so may I deputize you, uh, Bonnie? Who's the, is there a vice chair of your committee? Or, or a clerk?
Uh, I don't know.
There is.
I.
Yeah. I'll let you know who's on paper for those positions and then. You can step up. Carrie Anne, are you on that? Uh, oh, yay. Well, you may not be in a position to step up either, but I hope that you can have a meeting in Danil's absence and see what you can accomplish.
I can help with that.
Great.
Okay, great, okay. I, uh, I have nothing to say, superintendent.
Um, I gave a copy to, of my report to the committee, uh, earlier. I just wanted to, uh. Highlight that, uh, the early college application that we work with, with Bard College at Simon's Rock. Uh, part A has been filed with the state and we received a notification that it was accepted. Uh, if we, uh, we will be notified in October as to whether or not we have been. You know, accepted to move forward and, uh, fill out the part B, um, which is quite, it's, it's quite an extensive, um. Application process, but it's underway and we put a copy of the press release that. Uh, Bard College did on behalf of all of us involved, uh, out on our news feed on the app. Um, so that you can take a look at it. It was really, it was really nicely done. Um, I happened to be reading a, um, kind of a habit after three years of research. Um, but I happened to be reading, uh, an interesting article on the New York Times. I put the link. Um, here in, in my report on the tragedy of America's rural schools. Um, you know, as I was reading through it, it had a couple of, uh, passages that stood right out. Um, and, you know, kind of talking a lot about, um. The topics that we're working on with the regional school district planning board, so I encourage people to read it. There were a ton of links, a ton of information. I didn't even get through it all, thirty-one pages long, but I think if nothing else, it's a great community conversation. Um, I'm not saying that I think any of the, uh, you know, everybody's similar, but I think. A lot of these rural schools have been down the path and, um, that, that we're heading down and. Um, the, the very opening lines talk about the fact that, uh, over twenty percent, I think it's nine point three million. Um, children are in rural schools, which is twenty percent of the overall population. So we really have to pay attention to, um, lessons learned and, um, you know, the different studies that are out there. So I, I, I welcome everybody just, and, and maybe other people have seen it and maybe it can be a discussion point, um, further down the road. Um, our app has the, uh, uh, App Store and Google Play logo found in the bottom of, uh, the footer on, on our website. So that you can, um, go to the applicable, um. Uh, store and download the SBRSD app. I did it today on my phone and, um. Then you can decide, uh, that you would hopefully like to accept the push notification so that you'll be alerted. Uh, if there's, uh, news coming from the district and you'll get that on your mobile device. So it's pretty easy to do and, um, we look forward to having, um, families, uh, download that. Uh, and then, uh, I wanted to do a very quick report and thank you to, uh, Mrs. Dolan, who, uh, summarized the survey data. Uh, at least, uh, originally, uh, or, or at first glance for us on the family and student survey data. But, um, we are going to, um, we want to really give the students, uh, a greater opportunity to participate. So we talked today as an administrative team and, um, the students, right, six through twelve, will have an opportunity to do this, hopefully in their advisory. And then we'll report out on, um, a, a bigger response. So we had a fantastic response from families, uh, about a hundred and forty-one. It actually might be a little bit higher. Um, and they, um, overwhelmingly, uh, people felt that, um. Your children learn better in school, making those connections with, um, the teachers and their peers. Um, and it's, it, it was very, um. I think, uh, a good, a good feeling for all of us here that, um, most families felt that their children feel. Um, we're reporting that their children feel safe and they feel safe with, um, their children at school and on the bus. And that they believe that the district has the students' best interests at heart. Um, they, there's areas of growth, um, when talking about, um, creating engaging lesson during these, um, particularly difficult times. And providing clear and specific feedback, and we're taking all of those, um, under advisement and working with faculty and staff on how to. Um, make the experience better, so we wanted to at least report that part, um, out tonight. That's all I have.
So is that, did you send that out to us tonight?
I did. I sent it with the MOU. Um, I took that opportunity when I sent it to everybody.
Oh, good.
But it will be posted on the, um, it'll be posted, uh, uh, on the news, um, tomorrow and on my blog.
I agree.
As they always are.
Thank you.
And Beth, there was a lovely article in the Eagle on the Simon's Rock. Um, so that was great. I mean, the old fashioned, uh, thing known as the newspaper covered us.
Yes, it was really exciting.
Thank you. All right, and now we are going on, I'm not tipping anybody.
Put your own name.
Curriculum and professional development coordinator, Julie.
Hi, everybody. Uh, in your packet, you should have gotten my report, so I'll make this brief since I know you're all tired. Uh, we had great opening day. Uh, thank you very much for allowing us to have three instead of just two days. It was definitely needed with the jam-packed, uh, schedule that we have. Um, we have just started our new math program, K to eight. During opening day, there were two professional development days and, uh, the past few days I've been able to go into classrooms and support teachers. And, um, just thrilled to say that they are really jumped in with both feet and are. Working very hard to make this, um, a great transition for our students with a highly engaging math program. And finally, uh, our grant has been written and the only change we discussed. I believe in the spring or over the summer, and that is that we've gone from targeted interventions for title one to building-wide intervention. And the benefits of doing this is that we can reach more students and, and give them more support with keyword testing. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I don't want to, uh, read through what I already sent you.
I do.
Sure, Jeff.
Um, with new math program, it's exciting. That started, um, a couple of questions. A, I know we had a problem with, like, I just closed it. The language program a couple of years ago was behind, giving shortages with, like, COVID and everything. Did you get all the materials for the math program? And then my other question is, um, how is the adjustment? I'm assuming there's some sort of transition of teachers being comfortable with go math, transitioning to the new one. Uh, what's your expectation of, like, everybody being feeling comfortable with it? I'll be looking at like one month out, two months out, maybe of.
Uh, I think, okay, so to your first question, uh, yes, there is a national shortage of paper. So definitely there are some paper materials that are slowly trickling in. However, absolutely everything that our teachers need to have access to on the internet. So if they are missing, I believe we have one grade level right now that we still haven't gotten the student consumable book. But they can print it out and give it to the students until we get it in. Other than that, every grade level has the student consumables and the homeroom teachers all have their teacher manuals. Some of our special ed teachers have not received their manuals yet, but again, they can access all the manuals online. So, um, they have access, maybe not in the role they'd like. Um, as far as the rolling out of the math program, um. The biggest thing that we've heard from the staff is that they need our support and so we're giving it a hundred percent. So that was the two days professional development beginning, as well as me continually going in to support them in the change. And then they will receive more professional development through the year. So for example, they're going to have professional development on how to look at the data that we get from this and form their instruction. Um, and as far as adjusting to it, I would say I was in a third grade classroom today and they were. Spot on. Um, it's an adjustment for the kids too. There is an expectation that you be able to explain your thinking and explain how you got your answer. And that can be a challenge for kids. So it's, um, wonderful to kind of see them being pushed out of their comfort zone and being not good enough to just tell me what the answer is. But how do you know that? Prove it to me. Draw me a picture that proves that's the answer. Show me with a model that that makes the answer right. And those are really what those twenty-first century skills are all about. Cause otherwise you can use your phone to find the answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions, uh, for our, um, performance acceptance? Okay, so now we go on to Sandy.
Well, that's been Donna Highman. I wrote a pretty riveting report that I'll let you read. It was just follow-ups from some of the things I reported from the summer. But I wanted just to say it's really great to see the kids here and the staff. A pre-K program, which is greatly expanded this year. All of those children started on Tuesday. And if we, um, have the opportunity to be around at the time, we'll see a lot of little faces, three and four-year-olds. Pretty, pretty exciting and it's, it's very interesting to see little ones entering the school for the first time, have, um, their own ideas on how things could go. So we spend some time in the playground and you do not want to leave the little tunnel, but, um. Uh, I just have to say it's, it's, it's a great to be back here in school. I'm relieved of that. Uh, I just have to say, it's it's a great feedback here in school. I'm the leader of that.
You did mention that you might wanna bring some kids in to support, so you'll.
This wasn't the night for that, but certainly. I do, I have two little folks that uh attend the summer program that are ready to come.
Alright, well, we're looking forward to it.
Okay, you too. Thank you.
Alright, so I will take a motion to adjourn. By Jeffrey, seconded by. Bonnie, alright, roll call vote, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you say Kara? Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Uh, Bonnie?
Yes.
Okay, alright, we are adjourned at four minutes after nine.